We will call to order the September 19th meeting of the Stillwater Planning Commission. It will be the process this evening to call for items on the agenda. The commission will hear briefly from staff first, then the applicant and/or their representative, then we will open the public hearing and hear from those in favor and/or in opposition to the request. When you come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. And before closing the public hearing, both staff, the applicant and/or their representative will be provided an opportunity to respond and provide additional information and answer questions. After all interested parties have spoken, the public hearing will be closed. We will then hear closing remarks and alternatives from staff. And with that, we'll go to the public hearing portion of the agenda, and the first item is a short-term rental, STR 0127.
My name is Diane Hood. I'm the Associate City Planner. And as stated, this is a request for a short-term rental license. And this is for the address 1202 West Stonecrest Avenue. Here's an area map of the subject property. It's located in a small lot, single-family residential zoning district. Planning Commission is the hearing body for short-term rentals, and they are to be held similar to a specific use permit, except there is no staff report or presentation. As a reminder, the city cannot enforce private restrictions or covenants, but the commission can give weight to them as part of the deliberative process. Are there any questions for staff?
We don't see any. Thank you. At this time, we'll ask if the applicant would like to come forward. Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in favor of this item. We'll open the public hearing and ask for anyone in the audience that would like to speak in, I am, favor of this item. Seeing none, we'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition. I do have a couple of names here that would like to speak on the short-term rental that signed up prior to the meeting opening. Justin Morris, if you would like to come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Thank you all. My name is Justin Morris. I live at 1206 West Stonecrest Avenue. Resided in the neighborhood for as long as we were the first house in the neighborhood, so it's good grief, 15 years? Something like that. So it's been a long time. You know, I just wanted to state first and foremost that this is, from my vantage point, not in opposition of an individual trying to make money. That is not where I'm coming from. In addition to living in the neighborhood for 15 years, I'm a Stillwater resident for nearly four decades. I've lived all my life nearly in Stillwater, with the exception of a handful. One of the great things about Stillwater has always been its community. That's what draws people to this place. It's a wonderful, small, college town. By nature, though, one of our detractions sometimes is that it's a transient location. People come to get their education and move on, oftentimes to their careers and so forth. I've worked in rental properties in a previous life. But now, I've seen it as, someone who's been around for so long, the importance of really establishing roots and having that as a part of our community, and that's what community is. Well, there's a lot of definitions for it, but one of the main draws is where you know your neighbor. Your neighbor knows you. Stonecrest is, as you saw from the diagram a little bit a moment ago, is a very small neighborhood. It's a well-kept neighborhood with a strong HOA, an active HOA, where most every neighbor knows at least the name of their neighbor. So I very much want to preserve that, not just for Stonecrest, but for the city of Stillwater. To say that, yes, we have neighborhoods that are community-driven. And, you know, I'm all for visitors coming to our town, I'm all for that, the money that they bring to our town. But sometimes, the economics don't align with the long-term value of establishing roots and community and knowing your neighbor. And so that's my hope this evening, is that the commission will give some pause before they make a decision on whether or not to approve the applicant. Again, this has nothing, not against the applicant at all, this is not against generating revenue or anything like that. This is really about community. The applicant is an LLC. It's not an individual purchasing a piece of property. And so that concerns me in terms of developing community, establishing roots, and putting Stillwater's best foot forward and making sure that, yes, we're always going to be transient on some levels. However, when we have an opportunity to solidify a small community that has been strong, knows one another, we should do our best to maintain that opportunity for the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next name we have submitted to speak on this item is Tina Forsbeck. Is that correct?
That's correct. I didn't know I was going to speak today, so this is, I wasn't really prepared for this, but my name is Tina Forsbeck, and I also live on Stonecrest.
What address?
1218.
1218, thank you.
And we just moved there, and the reason why we did pick that house in that area was because that it had a nice community, which I agree with Mr. Morris. And I just think that having a short-term lease means like Airbnb, which that's kind of what it does mean in the end. I just don't think it's going to be a positive for our community at all, because you don't know who's coming, who's going. Most of the people that do rent out Airbnbs are, that are going to be coming here for the football games and stuff like that, which isn't a very quiet crowd, I would say. You can't say that about every person that rents out an Airbnb, but I just don't think it's going to be a very positive impact on our community, so I disagree with having them be able to do something like that in our area. I think that's more for something that's downtown. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That was everyone that had signed up. I don't know if everyone saw that, so I'm going to give an opportunity if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition. Yes, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Amy Klein, and I own the house at 5021 North Stonecrest Court. And the reason I purchased that house seven years ago was for my niece and her children to live in, because it was such a nice, nice community with families, and it was a safe place for her to have her children and raise her children. And I'm just concerned about, like some other people said, that if it is an Airbnb, that people coming in and having parties and driving through the neighborhood, people who don't know how many children are in the neighborhood, I'm just kind of worried about the safety of people with young children. And so I object to that.
Thank you.
That's my main concern, is just, I want the kids to have a safe place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition of this item? With that, we'll close the public hearing and ask staff to present our alternatives.
All right. So the alternatives are, you may, one, approve the application, defer for additional discussion, or, thirdly, you may deny the application.
Thank you. Commissioners? Thoughts? Discussion?
I think the current concerns that are expressed here have been typical of the concerns we've heard in previous STR reviews. So we've approved maybe all or the vast majority of those. However, one of my concerns with this one is it is LLC. Many of the STRs have been owner occupants of the house or who live in Stillwater, and therefore have more direct control over it rather than an LLC, which I don't know is based out of town. One thing, too, when we have an owner who is going to be putting this up for an STR, we've often asked them about, okay, what are the house rules? How will you enforce them? And questions like that, which, to some extent, are a risk mitigation. So that's one of my concerns with this. The other, and it's not so much just this particular resident, residents, sorry, but Tina wrote a letter, an email, whatever, and in the third paragraph, she expressed some concerns of kind of a strategic nature that I am very empathetic, sympathetic to. She says, "I also have a problem with an LLC taking renters' rentals from locals. I think it's hard enough for families to find affordable place to live in Stillwater. Have you looked at what houses and apartments are rented for? Being a college town makes it even more difficult to find something to rent that a family that lives here year-round can afford. Before we worry about bringing in tourists or short-term rentals, shouldn't we worry about our community's families, many who are almost homeless because they can no longer afford the outrageous rent here?" Might be a slight exaggeration on that, but it's become a, that concern expressed in the email has been a concern that's been expressed in many towns and cities. Many of them began in the Mountain West and the resort towns, where people who worked, say, in the public sector, who worked in the service industry, were forced out because they couldn't afford the high rents anymore. Owners of a residence were, turned it into an Airbnb and could rent it out at a much higher rate to tourists or others than the people who had been renting it previously. There's been cities like Dallas who have decided to not allow STRs in single-family zone districts. Even New York City is putting more requirements on Airbnbs. So I think it's a strategic issue that I know I've brought up before, and I thought that there was going to be some discussion about, one, should we continue to allow STRs in all single-family home districts? And two, if we don't, would we not allow them in the city? So I would like to see more discussion on that sometime in the future.
I would just say, I share Commissioner Shanahan's concerns. I think one of the largest things on this one to me is that it is an LLC corporately-owned rather than a single-owner, an individual. We have had instances very recently of one that was owner-occupied. We've had other instances where someone has bought a property as a potential retirement home, not quite ready to retire, and so they've looked at this as a way to be able to keep that home and use it as a way to kind of preserve. It does give me great pause that this is an LLC. And I also very much share your concern on taking away housing stock. You've mentioned that in the past, I've mentioned that in the past. It's something that, when I travel and go to kind of, Mountain West is actually where I've been as well, but college towns, it seems to be a growing trend in college towns, and I can understand why. Parents come to visit their students. You want to have a family gathering, and your student lives in a dorm, and a hotel room may not be the best place, so you might want to have a more of a family environment to have that. So I think that there's a good market for that here in Stillwater. Finding the balance is always the difficult piece when it comes to that. I'll also say this evening on this particular item, we do very much, when we hear these, we ask the applicant to let us know what are the house rules, what are the intent, have you met your neighbors? Who's going to respond if there is an incident? Who's going to be there? How quick are they going to make sure the trash is put away? How are things being done? If someone's not abiding by the rules, what is the process? We have no one here to answer those questions this evening, so it leaves a lot of information lacking for me to make a decision this evening.
Would it be of any value if we tabled this and requested a representative from the LLC to present themselves at a meeting and allow us to ask questions about things of that nature you mentioned?
I believe that we did that recently, so we would be following past practice of the commission to ask for that. So the next Planning Commission is October 3rd, and Chair would move to table this item to the October 3rd meeting in order for the applicant to come forward and answer questions from the commission.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 4-0. Next item on the agenda is a map amendment, MA 23-05.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Jaclyn Porter, City Planner, presenting, on behalf of Happy, or presenting this item of Happy Days Investment LLC map amendment request for 847 West Estridge Avenue for, from small lot, single-family residential to two-family residential. The subject property is located on the southeast corner of West Estridge Avenue and North Washington Here's an aerial view of the subject property. To the north is Will Rogers Elementary. To the south is O'Brien Stadium, which is the baseball fields. Hillcrest Baptist Church is located there at the southwest corner of the screen. And then Washington Heights subdivision is located to the west. This is a street view looking east on North Washington Street. The applicant does plan on demoting the existing structure that is shown in this picture. Here is a zoning map of the subject area. Public zoning is located to the north. RSL is to the west. RTM is located there in the northeast portion at the intersection of Ramsby and Estridge. There is currently six duplexes at that intersection. The future land use map projects the desired use of the subject property, and at the time that it was adopted, university was the projected use. Happy Days Investment LLC proposed project for the subject property is nine three-story townhomes with garages. The access to the garages will be off of West Estridge Avenue. The map amendment is to allow the proposed project to meet the density requirements. The next item on the agenda is for the specific use to allow townhomes in RT zoning districts. Kelly Harris with Bancroft International is here on behalf of the applicant. Are there any questions for staff?
I do have a question. You mentioned that the property that is to the, their zoning to the northeast is RTM, and we are looking at a request to go to RT. Could you give me a brief, just a brief on the difference between the RTM and the RT?
RTM is two-family and multifamily, so they could do more density in that location. Townhomes, however, are allowed in RTM without an SUP, but the cutoff is right at, for this area, RT, there would be exactly nine dwelling units allowed on this property to meet that density.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff? Thanks. At this time, we'd like to open the floor and allow the applicant to come forward and familiarize us a little bit more with the project.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Harris with Bancroft International, formerly known as Keystone Engineering, located at 923 South Lowry, here representing the owner tonight. We are requesting the rezoning to construct the nine townhomes. The townhomes, as Jackie mentioned, are allowed with a specific use permit in both the current zoning RSS and RT. However, the number of units that we're proposing is what's triggering the rezoning request. The building height and setbacks are the same in both of those zones, and we will not be requesting any variances to those. We understand that the comprehensive plan calls for this property to be owned by the university. However, that did not happen as the university was purchasing land, and it does not have any interest to purchase it now. We are proposing to keep the residential use and not propose commercial uses in this area, as has been an issue in the past. The one zoning step up to RT does get us where we wanted, so we didn't feel the need to go to RTM, which would allow townhomes by right. That would also give us a chance to show what we plan to do with the property, so that the neighbors could see and not be surprised, and just, we were trying to be upfront with what we're doing. Can I answer any questions?
I'll say you answered the question I was going to have, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, if any does come up, please ask me back up. Thank you.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak in favor of this item to come forward. Seeing none, we'll ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition of this item. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Gina Hellman. I live at 902 West Eskridge, right across the street from this property. And I'm not necessarily in opposition to it, but I do have some questions, especially, I mean, I was, I thought they were going to build maybe two or three townhomes, and so it was pretty kind of a surprise to hear they're building nine. And they're also three-story, is that correct?
That, yes, that's what we've, that's what we've got.
Okay. So again, that doesn't fit in our neighborhood at all. We have all one-story houses, basically, a few two-story. So anyway, I just have some questions about it. Again, I'm not in opposition, but it seems to me like now nine townhomes facing Will Rogers School is kind of a lot, and I don't know, I just can't imagine how that's all going to work. I know that's a fairly large property, but it's hard for me to imagine they can get nine townhomes on there. So mostly have questions, I guess.
Sure. I think I might ask if staff, could you put the graphic up that showed the layout of how they all fit on the property? We might just go over that just a little bit to answer that question.
The frontage will be towards Washington Street. The narrow part was north and south is this view.
So I don't know, do we have like a cursor or something that we could show on the map up there, like?
I don't think so.
We don't, so.
North is to the top of the page.
North is up. It appears that the driveway would come off of Eskridge on the east side of the property to the garages, which it appears that they're on the ground floor. And then the two floors of living space would be above the garages, and it looks like the front doors would front on Washington.
Yeah. If you don't look at these all the time, it's hard to know what you're looking at, so, understood. All right. At this time, I would ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask staff to present findings and alternatives.
So your findings for this subject is, the land development code allows rezoning of the land via map amendment. Two-family and multifamily district, RTM's zoning is located in the vicinity. The comprehensive plan does call for university at the property's location. Y'all alternatives? Woo! Except findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented, find that the map amendment is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impact to the surrounding vicinity, and do not recommend that the city council approve the map amendment, or find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions on?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Is there any study or information regarding how this proposed land use is going to differ from what the university land use would have been in terms of morning time, morning and evening, or morning and afternoon traffic with the, with the kids getting picked up and everything? Is that going to be, is the entrance, is Eskridge, I'm not completely familiar, is that part of the line of cars to get? I know my kids will be going to that school, but they are too little right now, so I don't know.
So here's the aerial of the subject properties in the peak, and then the drive for Rogers Elementary. It's going between Ramsey and Washington, not so much of Estridge.
Okay. So probably minimal interference.
Correct. And those of you don't know, this is a bunch of parking, and I believe there's a bus stop there, too, now, so there's high traffic.
So I think in the, of course, in the comprehensive plan, it said university use, the plans that the university has put out to public, that is part of the athletic village and so athletic facilities. So, you know, the traffic it adds varies based on event, so not necessarily daily. That lot currently that's adjacent to this is an overflow lot.
Okay.
But it's still pretty heavily used.
I do have a question for the applicant. What is going to be the intended use? Are you intending on selling them all off to private ownership? Is Happy Days LLC, you're going to continue to own them and rent them, Airbnbs? Is there a plan?
I am not sure if they intend to do a condo agreement to this and sell them individually or rent them out and keep ownership.
Thank you.
I'll elaborate a little bit. Condominiums currently in our code, we have to plat it. So if they decide to go into condominium, if they let us know, they do have to plat the subject property, so it will come to you.
So with their condos, they could be sold individually?
Mm-hmm.
Which is why they have to be platted that way.
Again, that's if we know that they're.
Which is different than multifamily.
Correct.
Well, I'll just say, it's just some observations in looking at the property and what's around it. It does seem like this could be conducive to multifamily, because multifamily is actually closer to the elementary school on, I believe it's Ramsey up there. The height does seem maybe a little out of scale with the residential that's on the other side of the four-lane road. The elementary school is a two-story commercial, which is fairly tall. What we did see this evening for the proposed build-out is not very tall for three stories. The baseball stadium is much taller along that area. It's set back a little bit further from the road, so it may not. so it may not feel quite as tall as it is if it were shoved up right next to the road. So it seems like this would be something that, to me, would fit in that area, and it's adjacent... There's adjacent zoning very similar. I think for me, initially, I was curious why it wasn't brought forward as RTM to match what else was over there, and then why, you know, why go through the extra headache of putting together an SUP to do this? But as Ms. Harris mentioned, they did want to be transparent so that everyone would know what was going in. Not every developer looks at it that way. So I think that was very thoughtful on their part.
Yeah, I went over to the property to refresh my memory of it. And it'll be good to see that dilapidated housing demolished. And I think it would be... It's... It's... Well, not always, but generally good to see some infill that helps density. And it is from the other side of Washington, so it's not intruding upon the single-family residences on that side of Washington. It also seemed a little out of scale, but like the chairman said, you have the large baseball stadium to the south. You have a two-story school to the north. So I don't know that that's a real concern. I was kind of surprised that they tried to... Are fitting nine units in there, but maybe that's economics, so...
Yeah, I think once it's all said and done, it'll be a good addition to that area. And I do think it'll go well with the stadium and the school next to it. So I'm in agreeance with what both of you had to say. And with that, I will motion to accept the findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 4-0. The next item on the agenda is a specific use permit for the same piece of property that we just discussed and the map amendment.
Yes. So Happy Days Investment LLC is wanting to tack on an SUP in the RT zoning district for townhomes. A refresher, it's at the intersection of Estridge and Washington. An aerial view, Will Rogers Elementary to the north, OSU baseball field to the south. Street view, looking at the current property that will be demolished, looking east off of Washington. Current zoning is RSS, previously just approved to RT. RSL to the west, public to the north. Future land use map projected the desired use of the area to be university. As mentioned in the previous item, this is a proposed use, nine three-story, single-family... Or... Nine three-story townhomes. I'll get it right. That will have access off of Estridge with garages. They're on the east side of the building, face in the front of the buildings off towards Washington Street. Kelly Harris with Bancroft International is here on behalf of the applicant. Are there any questions for staff?
I don't see any. Thank you. At this time, we'd ask if the applicant would like to come forward.
Good evening. Kelly Harris with Bancroft, located at 923 South Lowry, here representing the owners. I should have just continued my conversation because I did go more into specifics of where the buildings were facing now, but Jackie has gone over that. Yes, the front doors face Washington. We take access off of Eskridge. There'll be... It'll be a gated community. It'll have a fence along the east side. And there are three stories. However, the first one is a garage. It has maybe one bedroom. Then the second level is all living space. And then the third is just a half living space. It's more of a living room up there, and then it opens up into the rooftop patio. So in the front, off of Washington, it will look like a three-story structure. From the east side, it will look more like a two with a rooftop patio. We're not... Again, we're not asking for any variances to parking, building height, or building setbacks. So the building height restriction in RSS and RT that we're requesting are the same, and that's 35 feet tall. So that's right where we come in at. And that does include the outdoor patio in that height. I'd be curious... I know that the school is only two stories, but it's probably a tall two stories. So I'd be curious to actually see the height difference there.
I would expect it would be very similar.
I would say so. Any other questions for me?
Don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item. Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition of this item. Sure, yes. Go ahead and come forward, and we know who you are, but if you just state your name and address again for the record so our scribe can get that recorded.
Gina Hellman, 902 West Eskridge. So on Washington, do I... Address?
No, you need to address us, yes.
On Washington, will just be entrances into the individual townhomes?
Yes.
Correct?
Front doors, yes.
Okay. But the parking will be behind?
Yes.
So they will access that off of Eskridge?
That's what the plan indicated, yes.
Okay. Will there be any kind of fence or anything on Esk... On Washington?
On Washington. So no, there would not be a fence along Washington.
The fence is all going to be on the other side of the...
Right. So my assumption, and the applicant can correct me if I am wrong when we asked the applicant to have an opportunity to come back later, my assumption would be that fencing is there so that public doesn't park in the privately-owned parking areas or perhaps block the drive or a garage when there are large athletic events over at that venue. There can be a lot of cars there, so I'm sure...
They park all in front of our house.
Oh, yes.
So yes, there are a lot of cars. So just... I guess out of curiosity, how wide is each... I mean, that's a big property, but I would like to know how wide each townhome is.
I think we've got that information in our packet.
It just is hard for me to imagine them being able to build nine on that property, but I'm not...
I'll tell you what. Here in just a moment, we'll... I'll ask the applicant to come back because we do kind of have it set up that way for the process, for them to come back and answer these questions for us. It looks like... Yeah. I'm going to say approximately 25 feet is how wide they are.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So at this time, I'll ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of this item. Seeing none, we will give applicant the opportunity to come back and respond to the questions that have been raised.
Good evening. Yes, you are correct. They are 25 feet wide in each unit. So typically, townhomes are skinnier and taller. So we're just keeping with that typical feel. I say there isn't going to be fencing on the west side along Washington, but some of them may like to put some small fencing in for small pets or something, but those would obviously have to comply with the code as well.
With setbacks and such?
Yes.
Correct.
Fence height, yeah.
Okay.
Is that all the questions?
I think that was all the questions that we had. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll close the public hearing and ask staff to return to present findings and alternatives.
All right. The findings for this item is the Land Development Code allows the use of townhomes in two-family residential districts with a specific use permit. Duplexes are located in the vicinity, and the comprehensive plan calls for university at the property's location. So your alternatives for this item is accept findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed specific use as presented. Find that the specific use is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impact to the surrounding vicinity, and do not recommend that the city council approve the request. Or find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date.
Thank you. Commissioners, any more discussion? Or perhaps someone's entertaining a motion?
A motion to accept the findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed specific use permit as presented.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items from staff, planning commissions, or city attorney for discussion and possible action. The one item we do have listed is that the next planning commission meeting is October 3. Staff want to add anything today? All right. Thanks. The last item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 4-0. We are now adjourned.